Call this regular school committee meeting to order Monday, February 6, 2023. There... Why is executive session? I don't know. Forgive me, I'm a little confused right now. Call to order and a salute to the flag, Mr. Corrigan, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Mr. Stevens, resource committee.
Resource committee, we had a short meeting on Tuesday. We basically went over grants to receive and to accept and to apply for, and we went over the enrollment. One of the big things in enrollment, which really, I thought was really something. Finally, at South Street School, there are 601 students, 185 pre-K and 416 kindergarten students, and I'm not sure what the number was last year at this time, but the kindergarten students, I know at one time we were down like 350 students. So, we wondered where all those kids were if they showed up. So, we're actually now have quite, quite a few students at South Street School. So, that's, that was it for resource.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing nothing from the committee members, school building needs, Mr. Stevens, once again.
Just shortly on school building needs, the Sujekso projects, that'll be going on, be a new walk-in freezer for Pittsburgh High School, and New Memorial will be reconfiguring the kitchen for the serving lines, that'll be taking place. We discussed projects going on at Ryangold School will be going on as the stage, gonna replace the curtains at the stage, and I thought we, Mr. Roach mentioned it, I started teaching at Ryangold School in 1967, and those are the original curtains that were there, so it's kind of nice that those are being replaced. There's work being done.
Not that Pete's old, but I mean, although he is.
And we're doing some work on the portable classroom that's going to be done at Ryangold School. The Long Joe Window Project is moving a line along, and it should be completed in time. We talked about the bids from Crocker Elementary School, should be coming in on February 14th. The other thing that I know we're gonna talk about tonight, but I just wanted to, to mention the grants to accept, the Crocker Field Grant, and it's, we're accepting it, the Pittsburgh School Committee is accepting it, but it really belongs to the Crocker Field Restoration Committee, and Mr. Bennett and Mr. Crocker, and also thank the mayor, has been heavily involved with the Crocker Field Commission, has helped, and we will hear more tonight about Crocker Field Commission, but I'm so pleased that that is happening. That's it.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Dr. Knight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stevens, I understand that, you know, there's some proper procedures that needs to be, that needs to take place in order for these improvements, if you will, would take place. Is there anything that can be done to sort of update some of the policies that are used to, to do these repairs and fix these different items, just to speed up the process, because they take forever, and you know, you know, we would like to see, you know, things move more expeditiously, rather than having everybody waiting, especially when it's concerning students.
I think, I think Mr. Roach could answer that, but I think some of it is that there are projects under a certain amount of money that we can do. Other projects have to go out to bid, and that's the, the main problem. Mr., Mr. Roach?
Yeah, I mean, I think to, to your point, Dr. Knight, you know, just speaking of Long Joe as an example, I would say the Window Door Project probably started two years ago, because it's an application to the Mass School Building Authority. It's a process of approval through, through that agency that requires school committee, the city council, potentially zoning boards, when, when final amounts are available in terms of like, the estimators are done with predicting what the costs are gonna be, then it is the process of going out to bid, which takes, can take months. It's a process of evaluating those bids, which again, takes a certain period of time, and with any job like this, that when it exceeds $50,000 for items, or exceeds $150,000 for any kind of construction, the Mass General laws, Chapter 30B for, for items and 149 for construction, it require, we are spending your money, you know, out there in the city of Pittsburgh and the state of Massachusetts, so we have to be very careful in every aspect of it. It's frustrating, you know, but what I can say is, especially for a former principal who made 7,000 decisions in a day, and most of those in two seconds. So, I, I do understand that, that, you know, it can, it can try the patience, you know, of, of progress in some of the building improvements, but I know I've been, been talking a lot at the Long Joe School with their eighth grade civics classes, and it's been fun, because we've been going over all the different things that are in place, and that's just one school. And the goal is to get those done, and they will get done, but, but again, we cannot cut any corners when it comes to certain, you know, certain laws like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Roach. Any further questions? Seeing none, student support committee, Mr. Horgan.
Student support?
Excuse me, policy committee, sorry.
Nothing here to report at this time, we're scheduling our next meeting, which should take place in the next few weeks, so nothing to report.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Student support.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Personal subcommittee, nothing to report at this time, and executive committee as well. Student reps, we have a new student representative tonight. Am I pronounce, how do I pronounce this?
Journey.
Journey?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Journey, thank you for willing, your willingness to participate, and we thank the efforts of the, your previous student representative. So, welcome. Welcome aboard, and my condolences, I mean, good, good luck to you. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, fellow school committee members.
It is so great to be in the presence of you all today. Before getting started, I would like to introduce myself, as I will be the new student representative alongside Zoe for the next year. My name is Journey Young, I am a current junior at Pittsburgh High. I work at a nursing facility as an activities assistant, and while that does fill up majority of my time, I am still very school oriented. When it comes to pep rallies, football, or even basketball games, I'm very, I'm always there to support the ready-made community. I do really enjoy being involved with all schools, and us being the new voice, the new voices for all, gives us a better picture of what needs to be talked about more. Some important events that we'd like to go over with you today include the recognition of Mr. Perry, Simone Hennessy, Hunter Raboin, and Mock Trial Club for their outstanding awards and accomplishments. We will also be talking about the passing out of winter gear to students at Long Joe Middle School. An enlightenment we will feel important when it comes to Agenda Number Eight, the teacher, the teacher diversification program.
Firstly, we would like to acknowledge Mr. Perry for obtaining the AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award, Simone Hennessy for being named Rotary Student of the Month, Hunter Raboin, a student at Long Joe Middle School, and Hadley McGovern, a student at Memorial Middle School, for being selected for Project 351, which is an independent nonprofit organization that aims to build a youth-led service movement by engaging an unsung hero from each Massachusetts 351 cities and towns. We also would like to acknowledge the Mock Trial Club for winning their first mock trial against David Proudy. Congratulations to you all, as it is a great accomplishment.
In addition, on February 3rd, Long Joe Middle School faculty and staff handed out jackets and sweatshirts at the end of the school day to assist students who were in need. Because of the extreme weather, it was essential that students who truly needed it got provided with the necessary resources to handle these temperatures, and not, and not feel only as cozy and warm throughout this time, but supported by all schools as well.
With this, because it is Black History Month, we feel that it is imperative to speak on certain issues we see and experience throughout our schools. On January 9th, the last time I was here, a woman named Jackie Wetchi came to the stand to speak and spoke about her opinion on Agenda Number Eight, the Teacher Diversification Program. When listening, I was super intrigued by what she had to say, and it made me think a lot about our school system and the extreme lack of diversity within our faculty. First off, I would like to, I would like everyone to think about teacher stability, rather than just bringing teachers in. I understand that the main goal here is to make the staff as equivalent to the student body as possible, and I believe that Ms. Wetchi was right about thinking outside of the box. I've done a lot of research, and it's come to my attention that many schools nationwide are planning on introducing a new curriculum in 2024, the AP African American Studies, which is an advanced placement class dedicated to learning and researching the African despoor and elevate African American history and education. I'm conscious of the fact that this curriculum may be integrated within our schools, but the fact of the matter is that if Pittsburgh High School wants to rack in diverse faculty and create a more racially diverse environment, then we need to be merging more classes within our curriculum that will help us to do that. We can no longer depend on just hiring teachers, having students participate in meetings speaking on our experiences, and adding an altered history on the experience of people of color just in time for a holiday or a month in celebration. We need to do more than this. We need to create electives allowing students to learn more about their own cultures and other cultures outside of their own. We need to start learning about African American history, Native American history, Latino American history, Asian American history, and their contributions to our state and our country year round. By thinking of these things, we'll be able to also stabilize teachers' roles within our schools and make them feel like they have a purpose in being here. That being at this school, being a role model, and educating students will help kids feel connected to their past and be confident in their futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes?
I want to...
Miss Reynolds, applaud, I haven't heard such common sense. We all need to learn about, more about each other, right? And work together?
Yes.
I noticed you forgot the Irish in there, we have quite a history here.
I agree with you on that.
And you don't know it, but we do. And everybody, the Finnish people, and oh my lord, please, please maintain that attitude. It's wonderful.
Thank you so much. Amen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Seeing none. Approve of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting?
Make a motion to approve, school committee minute.
Motion made, seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Thank you. Communications? I don't believe there's any. And public comment, anyone wishing to make public comment should do so at this time? Yes, please, come to the rostrum. Thank you.
Good evening. Name, address? I've been taught school committee meetings, but I don't know the rules here, so...
Yeah, name and address is fine.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rabbi Eve Eichenholz, 225 Arlington Street in Lemonster. I come to follow up on an email that I sent not only to the Pittsburgh School Committee, but, Pittsburgh, yes, that's where I am tonight, but I've been advocating, as we get to calendar time for the 23-24 calendar year in many of our local school districts. I'm the rabbi of Congregation Agurat Achim in Lemonster. And while we are based in Lemonster, my congregants go to school districts across, up and down the north central area of Massachusetts. And as I listen to your student representative talk about teacher retention and diversity, I'm here to say that every time that there are not a recognition of religious and cultural holidays and observances, every time a student feels like they can't go to a teacher to say, "I can't do homework tonight," or "I won't be in school tomorrow," because they have a religious or cultural observance, when those aren't recognized and aren't supported, it makes students feel other and less than, and not connected to their community. It makes teachers struggle to accept a position if they don't know that they have the full support in their personal observances to be who they are. And so, I'm not critiquing, I'm trying to introduce myself, get to know the different school committees, sending emails and letters about the holidays. I can only speak for the Jewish calendar, but there are so many, as was said, different cultural and religious calendars, communities that make up the Pittsburgh School District, and that I hope that all of the calendars can be respected and included as you plan for the next year. I don't know what your calendar cycle is, but hopefully, I would like to offer myself as being a partner with the school committee and the school district on making sure that our calendars respect all of our students, faculty, and staff.
How long has the, has the synagogue been there in Lemonster? It's a number of years.
Almost, so we've been in the current building since the mid-'50s, and the community is almost 100 years old.
And how many, how many members?
About 100 families.
Really?
Yeah.
Great, great organization. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Oh, I can't comment on the public.
Seeing none. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Okay, Mr. Jokel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have, it's Project 351 night, so tonight we have two eighth graders, one from Long Joe Middle School, Hunter Raboin, and along with his principal, Mr. Mark Pierce, and we also have Hadley McGovern from Memorial, and her principal, Brittany Lavoy. So, I don't know if each of you want to come up to the tables up front, and for Hunter and Hadley, talk a little bit about your experience with Project 351 so far.
Who's gonna go first?
You must go first.
Maybe a teacher.
Can you use the microphone?
Let's go to the podium, so we can hear you.
Yeah, that's better. Oh, there you go. Yeah, okay.
My name is Hadley McGovern, and I was one of the students chosen to represent Pittsburgh as an ambassador of Project 351. Project 351 is an independent nonprofit youth leadership organization that began in 2011. The organization is an opportunity to make change in the community for the best. They supply the tools needed and make sure you're not alone through the process. Project 351 is an invitation to serve and lead eighth graders in each of Massachusetts 351 cities and towns, where ambassadors would unite the entire state as one team, one community in service. With Project 351 enrichment, training, and mentorship, ambassadors dedicate a year to build unity, cultivate kindness, and transform lives and communities through service. On January 14th, 2023, ambassadors across the state met at Faneuil Hall in Boston. We were placed with our assigned service hero teams, which is the group we would spend the day with. At Faneuil Hall, we listened to fellow Project 351 alumni speak about the success they made in their community and how Project 351 has affected them. After leaving Faneuil Hall, we were bused to one of four places, Cradles to Crayons, the Collaborative Suffolk Down Service Village, or International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Service Village. Based on the location, we participated in different activities to help others. At the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Service Village, where I was assigned, we assembled peace packs with the Martin Richard Foundation, hygiene kits for the Wonder Fund, loving kindness care kits, Andy's kindness blankets for patients of Gohanna Academy in Ton, food and essential supply kits for clients at the Pine Street Inn, and gratitude gifts for local veterans. Altogether, on launch day, we positively impacted over 6,152 lives. The experience was very empowering. I met and created friendships with ambassadors from other communities across the state where we spent the day working together. I learned various ways I can help, and I look forward to continuing my service in our community. I am very honored and grateful to be a part of Project 351.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Hunter Raboin. I am a student, a ninth grade student at Long Joe Middle School, and I was also picked to be an ambassador. On the morning of, on January 14th, me and all the other ambassadors were bused to Faneuil Hall, where we met, and we were addressed to the Embrace statue, which was the day before, and we were addressed about that from Governor Healy and Executive Director of Embrace, Boston Emery Paris Jeffries, and about the brace statue and why it was created. After that, all Project, all ambassadors stood up and put on our Project 351 shirts to unify as ambassadors, which after that, we went to four different, four different locations to help 10, 10 different nonprofit organizations with community service projects. I helped with the organization's Cradles to Crayons, which one, mine and one other service hero team helped sort and quality check books to make book bundles for people. We were able to successfully make over 500-plus book bundles in roughly three hours. After that, we went back to Faneuil Hall, which we had a little Miley Cyrus party, and we went back, which that day, we were able to positively impact 650, 152 people.
Thank you.
Nice.
Any questions?
Nice.
So, how long do you, is this like for a year, or how long are you part of 351?
It's a, it's a full year journey.
Okay. Did you ask for this, or were you selected?
Selected.
You were indoctrinated.
Our teachers invited us to...
No, it's a good thing.
Our teachers picked kids to be able to do it.
Good for you.
Nice.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for willing to participate. You know, half the battle is showing up, guys, and you're showing up. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, and tonight, we have a field trip to be approved by the school committee. Jen Fisher is here tonight to give us a little summary of this particular field trip, so thank you, Jen.
So, I just wanted to give an update to everybody about our trip to the Hanover Theater to see Hadestown. It fits perfectly with our Lightning Thief curriculum, so the sixth grade students have been invited, and they can bring one parent with them to go with them, because it's gonna be a night show, so it's gonna end a little bit later, so we wanted to give the parents the opportunity to join their student on the bus ride. So, we, so far, we have about 70, I'm sorry, about 60 parents coming with their child, so 120 tickets that way, and then the rest are students, just gonna come, and we'll chaperone them as well. We're gonna open it up to the high school, I just sent all the information out. I'll bring up the paper copies for the permission slip forms for the kids that don't know how to access the form, so the English teacher will have an opportunity to get this information out. It's gonna be March 28th, it's the first night of the show at the Hanover Theater. It's gonna give our students a great opportunity to see a live musical. We're really excited. This was all Mr. Jokel's idea, and we've been pursuing it, and it's, I think it's gonna be fun. Be a good night for the kids and for the parents.
And at the Hanover Theater, we had a Long Joe connection, correct, Jen?
Yes, a former teacher in Pittsburgh Public Schools is now running a STEAM program there that I'm hoping to partner with over the summer to do some theater and arts and engineering with her, so it's really kind of nice to have that Pittsburgh connection in Worcester, so we're excited about that, too.
This is pretty good, Jen. This, this ties right in with the, the opening of the new exhibit at the Art Museum, the Paper City.
Yeah.
This is perfect.
There's so many connections that we're trying to make, you know, with the Art Museum, and just exposing the kids and the families to other arts and culture that are in the area, so I'm thrilled about this opportunity.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, seeing none.
Bob? Okay, thank you, Jen. Thank you. Before we move on to the budget items, I'd just like to ask Mr. Tom Lamy of the Crocker Field Restoration Committee to give a brief summary of the recent award by the NFL Foundation to the Crocker Field Restoration Committee and really, the school department. And we happen to have a brief slideshow that Mr. Lamy put together, and take it away.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, folks. My name is Tom Lamy, I'm the treasurer of the Crocker Field Restoration Committee, and it's a pleasure to come here and speak on behalf of the NFL grant that's before you tonight. But first of all, I want to say that I have not been at a school committee meeting in many years. Last one I attended was at Memorial. So, to come in here and see this magnificent facility you have, it's, it's really, really, really nice, and I assume it's been inspirational to all of you, and certainly to the students and some of the ideals and ideas that they share with you, so facility do make a difference. So, this evening, I want to tell you a little bit about this NFL grant, and I'll do that by framing it around the Crocker Field Restoration Committee. Our committee formed in 2004, and so it's been almost, what, 18 years now since we've been working to help promote a better Crocker Field, if you will. You can see from the slide up there that this has been a collaborative effort, you know, between our committee, the Pittsburgh Public Schools, and the city of Pittsburgh. And none of these things would happen if it weren't for that kind of collaboration, because no matter who it is that comes in and wants to help Crocker Field, they want to know that the community in the school department and people in the community are really supportive of, of the things you're doing. So, I really have to say that that collaboration has been really special, and our, our effort for this capital project is to install a field turf, lights, and a new track at Crocker Field. The whole goal of this is to improve access and equity. Access, because only certain sports can play there now. Football is really the only sport that gets played on Crocker Field. But if you had field turf in there, you could play lacrosse and soccer, and any other sport you, that comes along, that you could play it on a field, that can be held at Crocker Field. So, it's really important to understand that that is an access issue. An equity issue is that all the fields around us have field turf, because the field, the grass can't hold up against all of the competitions and all of the uses of fields that we have today. Crocker Field is also situated in the downtown of Pittsburgh, and it can be the economic hub and the cultural hub of the city. We talk a lot about, you know, our culture today in America. Well, Crocker Field provides something that brings people together around their cultural heritage and their cultural interests. So, it's a real indicator of the deep culture that we have in, in Pittsburgh. Our group really has worked to try to secure money through grants, through donations, through, we've had money from the Mass Historical Commission, because as you know, Crocker Field is on the National Register of Historic Places. So, the slide that's up there right now is kind of showing you over the past 18 years, the kind of money that we've put into Crocker Field. So, our group, in conjunction with the school department and the city, has raised and, and spent over $2 million on improvements at Crocker Field, and I know that some of those are hard to see. You don't always kind of see some of the minor cosmetic things, repairing concrete cracks and things like this. The roof in the clubhouse is all done through community development block grants and Crocker Field Restoration fundraising efforts. So, that long list over that long period of time, it looks like a lot of money, but we've realized, we realize that our committee cannot raise the type of capital that would be necessary to do the field, the lights, and the tracks, and get it done so the kids can use it. So, we really had formed a smaller committee of people to look at how we could raise that capital for Crocker Field, and the NFL is one of those things that we've done, I think, that has been very successful. I really have to do, I think Pete mentioned Jeff Bennett and Alan Crocker, who have been on our, our ad hoc committee to do this, were really instrumental in, in getting that grant. But everybody on our committee participated in the ideas that went into it, so I want to commend them. If you look at that next slide, the natural grass surface only offers limited use right now, as I said, during the sports seasons. Stadium lights, they need to be upgraded, they were done probably 35 or 40 years ago. You can't even get the light bulbs anymore for that technology of light. So, if the lights go, you have to search around the country to find the light bulbs that replace them. A few years ago, they did go out, and we had a campaign to raise some money to buy those light bulbs, and it was like, I think, $8,000 just for, you know, finding the bulbs and installing them and so forth, so it's quite expensive, and those desperately need to be replaced. Pittsburgh High Track, if you went out there and walked on it, you'd see a lot of holes and patches and things that are popping up due to the, just the time, the age of the track, and that really has to be resurfaced, re-levelled, and, and redone. The estimated... A few years ago, they did go out, and we had a campaign to raise some money to buy those light bulbs, and it was like, I think, $8,000 just for, you know, finding the bulbs and installing them and so forth. So it's quite expensive, and those desperately need to be replaced. Pittsburgh High Track, if you went out there and walked on it, you'd see a lot of holes and patches and things that are popping up due to the, just the time, the age of the track, and that really has to be resurfaced, re-leveled, and redone. The estimated project cost for this is gonna be 3.1 to 3.5 million. So it's quite a bit of money, and it's a reason why we really have to hopefully raise large amount of capital. On the next slide, you can actually see what this would do if we do it. If we can be successful in this project, there'd be a massive increase in access and equity at Crockerfield. So you can see some of the sports up there that currently use Crockerfield, and some of the events that we have at Crockerfield. And if we had this project completed, you see the difference that would make in the different events and activities we have up there. So there's no question in our minds that, you know, doing this project is the right thing to do for Pittsburgh, for not only the students in the school system, but for the cultural reasons I've mentioned before, and also for the economic upturn that would take place, because you'd have a venue downtown here to attract people into it. So I really urge you tonight to, you know, and I know you have no problem accepting money, so I urge you tonight to accept the NFL grant money of $250,000. And I also want to tell you tonight that we have other benefactors, particularly digital properties and Polar Beverages, who've also committed a total of $250,000 to this project. So we've really made a lot of advancements, and I want to commend the mayor and Pete Stevens and other people who have worked on this for a long time, because it's taken that long to get to this point. And now is the right time. The time to do this project is now. If we wait any longer, the field will deteriorate further, we won't have the kind of capital that's available perhaps right now. So the time is right to do this project, and I hope you all support that, and I know you will accept the grant tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Let me take, make, take an opportunity to just talk about the committee. Crockerfield Restoration Committee, as you said, 2001?
2004.
2004, seems to be, have been in existence longer than that, you know?
Informal.
Yeah, yeah.
Nonprofit.
I mean, there are people like Lenny Lacso, who has been involved for many, many years. You can't get a more homegrown guy than him. And Tom Lamy. Tom, what a resource to have a former superintendent who really understands how to get things done. The city.
Mentioned Ray.
Oh, Ray Disenser, of course, sure. You know, when you start mentioning people, they're gonna forget you, so I'm gonna stop there. And, but yeah, we really, people have to understand, you know, the amount of effort. Jeff Bennett's, you know, his effort in securing the 250 was, I mean, we couldn't have done it without him, obviously. And Alan, Alan Crocker as well, he's been every step of the way. The city, my funding for ARPA will go into city council tomorrow evening, it'll be referred to finance, and that is a $2 million amount that I'm putting forward as my ARPA funding, because it's that important. You mentioned the economics of it all, too, Tom, and the fact that it's tied in, it's that, it's that link in the chain of Main Street. It just includes Crockerfield, and when, when this is completed, there'll be an opportunity to do so much more on that field than we can do today, you know, for the obvious reasons. But again, thank you so much, and I want to thank the superintendent as well and his staff for, you know, their participation in making this happen, so thank you all.
Just, yeah. Maybe, because we have mentioned a couple, but we also should, Rick Kazanjin, who was president of the Crockerfield Restoration Committee, you know, Band Parents, and you'll see Rick running the hot dog stand, making a few dollars for the band, and Aaron Donlin, Peter Kautzen, Kautzen Construction, another graduate of Pittsburgh High School, and Paul Gobbin.
Paul Gobbin, that's right.
It's just been quite a committee that's really worked very hard, and it's not just the field, but it's the repair of the bleachers, the cement work, the iron grilling around it, the work we've done just on the field to be able to keep the football team on it. And again, thank you to Mr. Lamy for all his dedication to it as treasurer, it takes a lot of his time. Not only Mr. Lamy Superintendent of Schools, but Mr. Lamy also taught in Pittsburgh at Memorial, and he was a teacher here. And Tom and I, talking about going back, we coached football together at Memorial. So a lot of the people on the committee, and our grand old dame in Pittsburgh, Mrs. Deidre Ronamo, who has been so instrumental, early years of helping out Crockerfield. Thank you, Mrs. Deidre Ronamo, and my good friend Bernie Keown, and there's so many more that have just contributed. And you know, talking of contributions, we'll take money, send it to Crockerfield Committee at Pittsburgh High School, we'll take $5 or $500, because there, it's not just the field. We try to keep the upkeep of that whole field going, so anybody out there wants to make a little contribution, send it to Pittsburgh High School.
Crockerfield.org.
Crockerfield.org. Thank you, Mr. Lamy.
Let me, let me be clear also, the city council will be getting that $200, $2 million ARPA funding request tomorrow evening, it'll be referred to the finance committee, so we're hope, I don't want anybody assuming that we have the, we have the funds. It has to go through that process, and we're, we're counting on the city council certainly to support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Roach, can you give a brief update of the budget items, including the calendar and the grants to submit and accept?
Yeah, sure can, thank you. I mean, I can show the calendar if that's preferable, just pop this up here, yeah. So the budget calendar this year is a little bit delayed, only because there is a new governor, and when there is a new governor, they have, let's see if this pops up here. Yep, we reviewed the following FY '24 budget calendar at the Resource Subcommittee meeting last Tuesday, the 31st. We are currently in the ongoing process of working with each site to develop their budget proposals, their budget ideas, their budget needs for the, for the coming fiscal year of 2324 for schools. So that is, that is ongoing, and that's happening. In mid-March, there will be a public forum for all communities and school systems, and that's where the governor's budget will be released. But prior to that, over the past month or so, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed have provided several workshops that allow schools to, schools and school communities to predict their foundation budget. So we have done that, we have a general idea, we're hoping that that's about where it works through into the budget, you know, cycle for us. It is gonna be year three of the Student Opportunity Act, of a six-year rollout of that, the law that was passed in Massachusetts several years back, that really target building in equity. We've heard a lot about that tonight, and it's absolutely about equity in finances as well, particularly for communities that have typically really had to scrap for every nickel and dime along the way. So Pittsburgh should be poised with a, with a strong foundation budget to be able to continue the important work that's happening in the schools and across the Pittsburgh Public Schools. So roughly speaking, we will be hitting it pretty hard in our Resource Committee Subcommittee meetings and throughout our school committee meetings in March, April, May, and through June. So again, Resource reviewed this last week, and I'll certainly make it available to, to all the committee members here. Glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none?
And then grants?
Yeah, so we have a few grants to, I'll just pop that back off, to submit and then to accept as well, in addition to a donation. So quickly, I'll run through those grants, and then the committee can decide whether to take them individually or bundle them. So there's school behavioral health, workforce, and service grants to submit for $100,000. Submission deadline is February 10th, the goal is to strengthen school behavioral health infrastructure. The Safer Schools and Communities Initiative of $50,000. That deadline is the 17th. In that one hand, local equipment and technology to harden locking devices in the school, in the school sites in particular, Longchamp and Rheingold specifically. The mass farming reinforces education and student health, the Fresh Grant, for a very general number of $23,856. And that is to encourage existing national school lunch program and child adult food care program sponsors to build capacity to grow or purchase locally grown and produced ingredients, prepare nutritious, scratch-cooked meals, and educate students about the food system. And then to accept, we heard from Mr. Lamy about the $250,000, which will fund and support the installation of the artificial turf service and the other projects at the Crockerfield. And the Innovation Pathways Grant, we were notified of an additional $35,000, which would be awarded on top of the $125,000 that was awarded previously earlier in the year, and that will increase funding amounts to support the Innovation Pathways Program at FHS, which is currently advanced manufacturing and environmental and life sciences. We had one donation to accept from the class of 1973 in the amount of $3,598, and that is for framed picnic tables eight foot long at Pittsburgh High School.
Mr. Stevens?
And the donations in our agenda, can it just reflect that it's from the class of 1973? It doesn't reflect it in our agenda on 23-234, that's from Kim Belio.
Absolutely.
So that'll be in the agenda in the minutes.
How does the committee wish to proceed? Bundle the action items.
Motion to bundle the action items.
Motion made to bundle action items 23-229 up through and including 23-234.
Make a motion to accept 23-229 through 23-234.
Motion made and seconded to accept, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. There's no need for executive session at this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.